It's time for Community Matters, a service of TCB Broadcasting, and it's sponsored by Vidalia Federal in Lyons and Vidalia, Todd Paget Housing Center in Claxton. Now let's see what's happening in our community with host Tony Doc Wardlaw.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. Welcome to this edition of Community Matters. I'm your host, The Doc, and we are here on a beautiful Wednesday morning, and I'm telling you, I see the sun rays shining through and Dave is here and he's wide awake. I mean, I've never seen you this awake, Dave.
Thank you.
Of course, I've been a little sarcastic and facetious, but I'm so happy to have you with us this morning for another edition of Community Matters. We have a special show for you this morning. We've been blessed since I've been hosting the show for over now, over a year and almost a half, I think. So that would be about eighteen months. I've had both city managers, I've had our chief of polices for both municipalities, and I've had the sheriff, I've had all kinds of other CEOs and community leaders. And out of all this time, I've never had the county manager in on the show. And so I'm blessed this morning to have the one and the only, the man, the myth, and the legend.
Don't know about that.
Our dear county manager himself, Mr. John Jones, how you doing this morning?
I'm doing great, I'm doing great. Pleasure to be here, appreciate the opportunity to come and talk with you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, we had the county manager in not long ago, it was nearing the end of last year. And of course, having, I'm sorry, the chair, our county chair, chairman of commissioners, he was here, Mr. David Sykes, and he gave us all sorts of information and he did a great job informing the people. But it's a new year, 2023, we're already, believe it or not, in March. And so I thought, you know, we should get the county manager in here and let's get some updates on what's going on in our fair county.
Absolutely, glad to be here, and as you well know, we've got a lot of things going on. Particularly one that's right downtown that everybody sees every day called the courthouse and the jail expansion.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we're gonna get to that. Before we do, I just want to introduce you to the people, because a lot of people may not know you. You're a man of few words in the public, and you're behind the scenes, but you're getting a lot of things done. So for those who don't know you, can you tell us where you're from and how long you've been in the position of county manager?
Sure. Born and raised in Cook County, which for those who might know that is between Tifton and Valdosta. Grew up on a farm with my two older brothers, on the farm that was started by my grandfather.
Okay.
That is still in existence today, it's just we're not there operating it, because we had made a pact when we were teenagers that if we ever got out of tobacco field, we wouldn't get caught back in it again. And we've been true to our word after all these years. And so, but all of us went to college, that was one of the things our parents grew up with, was that you were going to college.
Okay.
It was not an option to us.
Not an option.
My father, like I said, was a farmer, a dirt farmer. My mother worked in a manufacturing facility for thirty something years, and they were gonna get their sons' educations, if nothing else, they were gonna have an education. And we did. I got a degree in accounting from Valdosta State College.
Okay.
After that, worked for several years in bank, one of them was CNS Bank, for those who remember CNS.
Oh, yes, that's been some years. You're dating yourself there.
Yeah, I'm dating myself bad there. And then went to work for a company called Landis International, which did agricultural research development for agricultural chemicals.
Yes, sir.
And stayed with them, and then we sold to a public company, and then went for the twenty years after that, worked in Eastman for an oil company over there, where we had twenty-six convenience stores and also with the largest distributor of race gas throughout southeast.
Oh, wow.
And then we started downsizing that, and then the opportunity, this position became open, and I was encouraged to apply for it, and did, and as they say, the rest is history.
The rest is history. And all for our favor, you've been now here as the county manager for, what, almost eleven years?
Been here eleven years came the day after Christmas in 2012, and on that day was, at that time, the county and cities had been in a lawsuit on local option sales tax, and on my first day here, the judge had rendered his decision, and that came to lay it on my desk at about ten o'clock that morning on my first day. And so we've come a long way since that day.
Yeah, we have. On your first day, welcome to Toombs County.
Welcome to Toombs County.
Well, you know, that's how we break you in around here, you know?
Broke in whale.
Well, listen, you know, your job as the county manager, what we, many people know is that we have five commissioners. One is the chairman, right?
Right, correct.
And then if we have all of those persons, then what does the county manager do?
The county manager's responsibility is for carrying out the day-to-day affairs of the county and managing those affairs, including the personnel that's associated with that as well. And basically, what the commissioner, the board of commissioners do is set policy, and then from that policy, then my job is to carry out our duties that we have. They set our priorities on what they want to see happen, and basically, at the end of the day, my job is to make sure those things happen.
You execute it.
I execute.
You make it happen.
They come up with a plan, we work on the plan on how we can do it, when we can do it, how we're gonna fund it, and then my job is to make sure the plan happens.
So you gotta be a numbers man?
You gotta be a numbers man, and it's like in anything, it's managing people as well, and that's managing departments and the county government's a little bit different than the city government, in that you have constitutional officers that are elected and have their individual offices they have, that they have direct authority over. So it's a coordinated effort among, for county government, between the constitutional officers and the county government. In our particular case here in Toombs County, we have had, since I've been here, an excellent working relationship with all of the constitutional officers.
Excellent.
The county has been wise in selecting those leaders, and we're very fortunate to have those folks in there, because they all do a really, really good job. And somebody had asked me back of this several times about what's the biggest obstacle for local governments to have to overcome, and it basically is getting good people to run for office.
Good people.
Everybody's working, everybody's doing their jobs, taking care of their families and all, and getting good people to run for public office. Not only for public office, but also to serve on all these boards that we have. We have a tremendous amount of boards we are responsible for appointing certain members to, and getting folks that, and serve on those, and of course, those come with virtually no pay, so it is a true volunteer effort.
Wow.
And all like that. So it's, at the end of the day, the whole operation, city and county governments, is all about coordination, cooperation with each other, and working together. When we're working together, we can accomplish a lot of things.
Absolutely.
And I think in the last ten years, that's what you've seen.
Excellent.
There's a lot of cooperation with city governments, going from where we were at before to where we are now. And I think a testament of that is, like I mentioned earlier, about the courthouse being built, that's being built by a coordinated effort on splitting the sales tax to get that building done. And that was through the cooperation and the help and all that we got were from the cities.
So you, as the county manager, you're, you are, I guess you're the glue that kind of holds things together in terms of really working to manage all of the county staff as well as the liaison between the city officials or the city government?
Yeah, the city governments, you know, the elected officials talk with each other, and obviously, we talk, I talk to the elected officials of the city too, and that sort. And then our main thing that we do is the managers, the city managers and county managers, constantly working with each other, what do they, what do they have going on, what do we have going on, where are there areas that we can work together on and so forth, and a lot of those come about, again, by working together.
Excellent, excellent. So you spend time with Mr. Jason Hall and Mr. Nick Overstreet?
Yeah, we, before COVID, we always met at least once a month, had lunch together, once a month. COVID kind of stopped that, and we've tried to get that put back together too as well. And again, just to sit down, have lunch, and just kind of, in a very relaxed atmosphere, understand what his office is looking at, what obstacles we're seeing out here, and what events that we see that we need to all work on together.
How many county personnel do you have under your supervision?
Well, altogether, and that includes constitutional officers and all, we have around one hundred and sixty-five full-time employees.
Oh, wow.
You've probably got another forty to fifty part-time personnel that work as well. So you're talking about basically a payroll of two hundred individuals.
Oh, my goodness.
Here, so, yeah, it's a large workforce that.
You're a busy man.
Oh, stay pretty busy, but enjoying it.
Okay.
Enjoying it, really love being here, Toombs County's a great place to be right now.
Excellent.
I think it's one of the best spots in the world, and I think it's, we're very fortunate to be here, and I don't think sometimes the folks who live here realize what a great place we've got here. And so it's just been a pleasure for me to be here these eleven years, and planning on still being here a few more years as well, and just really enjoy working with everybody, both the employees, the constitutional officers, and the residents and people as well. It's really just, they're just all, they're good folks.
That's good.
It's just a bunch of good folks.
And you hail from Lenox to Lyons.
Lenox to Lyons, a big city of Lenox, which I think may have a couple hundred people.
Right.
It's got a red light.
Right.
It does have a red light, it does have a bank, but that was the town I grew up in.
Oh, boy.
I lived, I tell folks, I lived the life of opie on Mayberry. I was opie.
Wow, that's wonderful. So coming from Lenox, you, you know, Lyons was a step up, because we got more than one red light.
You got more than one red light, got more than one bank.
Oh, boy. You thought you were really moving to a metropolis when you got here.
As they say, you moved into High Cotton.
That's right. Well, that's excellent, excellent. Well, you tell that story about being in the tobacco fields, my brothers and I, I have four brothers, and we all grew up having to work in the tobacco fields as well. We made the same path. So I can empathize with you about, you know, once we leave here, we are out, we're not going back.
We're not going back. Learned my lesson. It was an inspiration, it was an inspiration to go and pursue another career.
One more thing I want everybody to know about, and we mentioned this before we went on the air, you know, if the commissioners were to resign and said, you know what, we've had enough of these people in Toombs County, we're out, the ball does not really land totally in your hands, does it?
No, no, it doesn't. So I'm an appointed official, I'm not an elected official, and as such, I serve at the pleasure of the board of commissioners.
Okay.
And once that happened, if for some reason, all the positions on the board became vacant, I would then start reporting to the probate judge.
Wow.
And the probate judge would then be responsible until the governor made some decisions on what to do next.
The governor would have to.
Yeah. But until then, in the meantime, I would be reporting to the probate judge.
Well.
And the probate judge then would be the chief elected official for county government.
And at this point, that would be our probate judge is Ms. Tina Lindsay.
That's correct.
So she would be your boss?
She would be my boss.
Wow. So that's a piece of trivia, I thought that it would be interesting, so I wanted to share it with our listeners, and, but, you know, still doesn't take away from, from all that you mean to the county though.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it. And I could say, things keep happening.
Yeah.
It's a three hundred and sixty-five day a year operation.
Yeah.
And so, but yeah, I appreciate those words.
Good, good. Well, I know that our listeners are interested in hearing more about what's happening in our community. So can you tell us some of the projects that are happening now? In particular, let's talk about the courthouse. I see that it is coming together, and it looks like it's happening on schedule.
That's correct, we're on schedule. Right now, we anticipate that we could start moving into the new building in July. The completion of everything, including the demolition of the current courthouse and the building, the park and parking lot, would take another few months, so you're talking probably the end of November to December of this year, everything being completed. And a lot of folks see the courthouse, and they tend to forget about the other aspect of it, which is the jail, which we're going from a one hundred and twenty-three bed facility to a hundred and ninety-plus bed facility.
Oh, wow.
We're also expanding that, we're also adding additions to the booking area now and expanding it, and then we're taking out all the electronics in the old jail out and replacing them with newer electronics as well. So it's a combination of detention center, jail expansion and improvement, and obviously the courthouse as well. And the general contractor and the subs, which is TQ Constructors, have just done a marvelous job, being able to keep it on schedule. And we started this thing, I don't know if you remember, but it rained and rained and rained, and it was a mud pit over there, and somebody asked me one time, it looks like all they're doing is pushing dirt around. I said, well, that's all they're doing is trying to dry it out so we can go back to work. And, but they've done a really good job on being able to keep it all together and keep us on schedule, and so we're excited about it, we're getting in, again, to use a little farming technology, getting into the short roads.
Getting into the short roads now.
Getting into the short roads. And so, like I say, we're looking forward to that, and it's gonna be a nice addition here to Toombs County, I think it'd be what we had planned for it to be, to be a fifty-year-plus courthouse facility. The other facility, which was built in sixty-four, has served as well.
Yeah, it did.
We have gotten our money's worth out of that and more.
Absolutely.
And we hope to do the same thing with this facility as well.
Speaking of the old courthouse, what's gonna happen to it?
What'll happen there is, once we get moved out, we have a lot of stuff inside that we're gonna sell.
Okay.
So we're gonna spend two weeks putting that out for the public to buy, and then once that happens, then they're gonna demolish that building, and then basically lower that hill that you said is set on there and push that dirt to the lines, city of lines, go eastward with it and build that area up.
Okay.
And so that the, where the courthouse, new courthouse sits, will be the high point elevation-wise of that whole area.
Oh, wow.
So that's, that's, we're looking forward to that, like I say, that changed that whole appearance there as well.
It won't even look the same.
Right. And actually, where the courthouse sits, old courthouse sits now would be more of a park that will be there.
Oh, excellent.
You'll have parking between it and the courthouse and around the sides, and of course, back towards the city of Lyons as well.
Wow.
So we're excited about that, and we, like I say, it's going to be, we started, we actually started this project back when I first came here, somebody asked me the day, when did you actually start this project? Well, it started in twenty thirteen, was really when the planning started on all this, because that, the air conditioner that operates the front of that old courthouse is the same air conditioner, the original air conditioner. It was a trained water chiller system.
Wow.
It finally went out completely about six, eight months ago, and so we had to pull a mobile unit in to keep the old courthouse cold and heated. But it had lasted that long, and Mr. Bobby Kimball was the guy who worked for us at that time, and as a consultant, and he's the one who's kept that thing running all these years. And when we came, the reason it started back then, we came then, we knew we had an issue there, and at that time, that was gonna be a half a million, three quarters of a million dollar issue. And do you wanna put this kind of money into this building?
Mm-hmm.
And that's when got the process, that's really got the process started on doing that. And then we moved public works, which used to be downtown, out, out where the landfill is in the pound fifteen, in anticipation of having to, like I say, do something new with this courthouse.
Now, the courthouse, are you at liberty to share with us the cost of it?
Sure, it's, right now, the courthouse and jail altogether, right now, is just a little under thirty-seven million dollars.
Oh, wow.
That project is being financed through sales tax, and how it's being financed was, we issued, we created a Toombs County Public Facilities Authority, and they issued bonds for that. And we went through the process, because Toombs had never gotten a bond rating before, and went through that process and came back with a double A rated bond rating, which triple A is the highest you can get, which is Georgia and some other folks. So that was a really big step, because each one of those letters represents a quarter of a point on your interest rate.
Okay.
Sold those bonds, and the effective interest rate of those bonds for thirty years is right at two percent.
Oh, wow, wow.
So, and then sales tax is being used to pay those bonds back.
Okay, okay. Wow, that, that, yeah, that is a lot of numbers.
It's a lot, it's a lot of numbers. We had to go through an interview process, the bond rating agencies had to interview us, they interviewed the development authority, wanting to get, so they could rate us. In fact, they had the financial records, but they wanted to know more about the community. And in fact, I've got a review coming up here in a couple of weeks with them, because every year they come back, what's going on here? And seeing them, because they, again, gonna come back with their rating and all. It's a big step, because it opened up a financing opportunity in the future for the county on any large projects to be able to get the cheapest money possible.
Good, good. Well, I wanna ask one more question before we take a break, and that is, the courthouse itself looks extremely massive. I mean, it looks like a huge building from the outside. I mean, what can we expect on the inside in terms of capacity? How many courtrooms? How many offices? What are we looking at?
You're going from a twenty thousand square foot facility to an over fifty-five thousand square facility. You're going three floors. You're going from a courthouse that had maybe forty-five hundred square feet devoted to court systems to one that has about twelve thousand square feet devoted just to courtrooms. You're going from basically a large courtroom and one small courtroom to four courtrooms there, with one of those courtrooms being able to be broken down into two courtrooms. Additionally, the probate judge will have its own hearing room up there.
Okay.
So you really got a half of a courtroom, if you would, there as well. So all the second and third floors are devoted to the courts, that's probate, that's magistrate, that's spirit court, juvenile court, and state court. So all the county functions will be on the first floor, and we're also moving board of elections from over here off US one into the courthouse two, so early voting will take place at the courthouse now.
Oh, wow.
Going forward and all like that. So moving those, that's, everybody else over at courthouse is moving as well.
Yeah.
But we're adding a board of elections.
Adding the board of elections.
So now it's easier early voting, because we have people come to courthouse to early vote, and you have to direct them back over here, and a lot of times, folks don't know exactly where that building is at.
Yeah.
So now it'd be a lot more visible, a lot more easier accessible, and just be a better facility all the way around, have early voting.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we're talking to the county manager, Mr. John Jones, and wow, is he not a wealth of information on this morning. And so we're gonna take a break, and, and don't go anywhere, when we come back, we're gonna dive more inside his head and see what else we can pull out of him this morning, and, and continue to talk with our illustrious county manager. Come right back, right after these messages.
Smarter, not harder. Here at Vidalia Federal, we are all about that phrase, as we strive to make your life easier. No more drowning in paperwork or being interrogated over the idea of buying a house. Getting a home loan should be an enjoyable, simple process, not a daunting task. This is Julia McKenzie with Vidalia Federal Savings Bank, and I am here to make the mortgage process easy and simple. Come see me at the Vidalia branch on Jackson Street to talk about your next home purchase or refinance. I look forward to serving you. Member FDIC, equal housing lender.
Ho, 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 Merry Christmas. This is Anthony J. with Todd Paget Housing Center. And no, I'm not Santa, but we share our sleigh in the competition over here in Claxton, Georgia. We build our manufactured homes more energy efficient, better built, and have the best setup than anyone else. Whether you've been naughty or nice, come by, and we'll be glad to show you the Todd Paget Housing Center difference. Jiggle us at nine one two seven three two one four six six, or stop your sleigh at fifty-two sixty, Highway two eighty west in Claxton, Georgia. Todd Paget Housing Center, all of your housing solutions under one roof.
Dorothy Davis with Southeastern Business Solutions here, specializing in website services, graphics management, and video editing. We have partnered with TCB Broadcasting to bring your sponsorship ads to life with their live on-air programs, which are recorded and archived along with your sponsorship ads as they were aired at the time of production. These programs are viewable by anyone at any time from anywhere on major social outlets like YouTube or Facebook, to include TCBBroadcasting.com's website. That's a lot more viewing potential, more than you would get than with a still banner that's only viewable by website visitors. With this kind of viewing potential, you wanna make sure your ad says a lot more than a simple animated logo can say. These services are only available on TCBBroadcasting.com, and the spots are limited. So reach out to your TCB Broadcasting account executive and get yours locked in as soon as possible. You can bring your own video with you, or you can email Dorothy at SoutheasternBusinessSolutions.com, and you and I, we can put our creative minds together to come up with the perfect ad that says the perfect message and gets you the perfect attention.
Welcome back, welcome back to this edition of Community Matters. I'm your host, Tony Wardlaw, The Doc, and we are here, and we are talking with our illustrious county manager, Mr. John Jones. He has informed us on what we can expect from our, from the new courthouse, and it's just been good getting to know you, Mr. Manager. And, you know, we were talking earlier about your different job functions and how you manage the staff, and you work with the commissioners to execute those policies and things that they vote on and put in place. I wanna ask you, you know, do you ever, does it ever get to be overwhelming? Do you ever say, wow, what have I gotten myself into?
Not really. Like I said before, you know, I just really enjoy what I'm doing. I enjoy and love the people I work for, I love and enjoy the people I work with, and I love and enjoy the people of Toombs County.
Excellent.
And so, you know, when you, when you have that, there's no obstacle too big that we can't tackle and take care of.
That's good.
And like I say, and just, I said before, I think this is the best place in the world to be right now, is Toombs County, and so.
Yeah.
Not really, there's not been anything, I just know the team we have together, from top to bottom, in this county, from the borders of this county, including the cities, and it's a really, really good team, and just really excited about what we have accomplished, and really excited about going forward in the future on what we are going to accomplish in the future. I think we are gonna be a model for a lot of folks to come look at.
Excellent.
So if you wanna know how to do things, well, you just need to take a walk down to Toombs County.
That's right.
And we'll show you in the cities and the county how you do things, and how you do things right. And so, I'm just glad and excited to be a part of that.
Right.
It is, I told folks, you know, about it, and I said, I'm just enjoying the ride here, because it's just, it's like I say, it's just a very, doing a lot of good things for a lot of good folks, and that's, that's what it's all about.
Well, you, you've been here now for over twelve, eleven, twelve years, and you talked about how there was a little bit of dissension when you, as soon as you walked into the office. How have you seen the unity over the years, not just with the government staff, but even with the citizenry?
I think, like anything like that, you had a lot of things to overcome, had to change, you had to change the culture, you had to change a lot of the way folks thought about things. You had to give them confidence again in their local governments.
Okay.
You had to give them assurance, that feeling of assurance that everything's being done properly and correctly, and they wanted to see results, didn't want to just see talking about it, let's just see, we wanna see some results.
Right.
I know one of the first things I ask when coming, what's the biggest thing that we can do to be impactful, to let everybody know we're changing the culture and everything? And believe it or not, what I got back, pave Ezra Taylor Road. So I told everybody in the beginning out there, didn't matter what the question was, the answer was, we're paving Ezra Taylor Road. And we did, we paved Ezra Taylor Road. And, and that's one heck of a road, too. That thing was built right.
Yeah.
And so, but, but anyway, it was changing, it took time. I mean, just. And, uh, so, but, uh, but anyway, it was changing. It took time. I mean, it just took time. Uh, you know, you can talk all you want to, but do you walk the talk? And, uh, that's what we had to do. And I thought we did that, I think, the elected officials did that. And that, again, I can't, I keep coming back to not only the county, but the cities as well. Everybody at that point in time was ready to move on. Uh, and everybody was agreeable to move on. Uh, and so the next step really was just to get everybody talking. Because it had reached a point, folks weren't talking.
Right.
They just weren't talking.
Right, right.
And, uh, and one good way you do that, really, it's not that difficult, is you do it with a plate of food in front of you. And, uh, it's hard to argue when you're made full of food. It just really is. And so, uh, but that was it. Uh, again, that was one of the things that they, qualities they were looking for when they hired me, was somebody who can talk to people and can, uh, begin that process. And, uh, as you can tell from our conversation here, I'm, I'm not opposed to talking.
No, no, not at all.
And, uh, so, uh, like I say, uh, it was, it was a challenge coming here. It was an exciting challenge to have. And, uh, we look forward to it. And, uh, like I say, uh, like I say, we've done a lot in the last eleven years. But, uh, again, I think, uh, we've got a lot of things that are going, new going up, uh, in the next ten years. I think, uh, Tooms County is really going to see a, a lot of good things happening in the next ten years.
Yeah, you, you know, and, and as you say that, uh, I'm looking at you and I'm saying, he knows something. You've got something up your sleeves.
Eh, well, it, it, it's, it's one of those things, it's just patently obvious. Uh, all you need to do is get in the car.
Yeah.
Get on sixteen.
Yeah.
And drive towards Savannah.
That's right.
It's right there in front of you.
Yeah.
That is headed this way.
That's excellent.
Uh, and so just be prepared. I had a good friend of mine that lives up in Carterville, Georgia, uh, that I know. And, uh, he was in construction. And he saw the same thing, and this is going back twenty and thirty years ago.
Oh, wow.
He saw the same thing headed north out of Atlanta because he was working in it.
That's right.
And he moved to Bartow County in Carterville. And, uh, started doing developments, their residential developments and some commercial developments, mainly residential developments. And all that, because it was the same thing. There's a storm, for lack of a better way to say it, coming this way.
Yeah.
And I just got to get out in front of it. And that's what he did. He just got out in front of it. And so that storm is, is, and this, and when I say a storm, it's not a bad storm.
It's a good storm.
It's a good storm. And all, and, uh, then, uh, you can just see it, it was kind, it's coming this way. It's coming from here all the way going to Macon. And this is the next stop.
That's excellent.
Uh, I mean, this is the next stop for it. And, uh, about storms, I'll just mention this too. We used to put a thing up there about, you know, sometimes storms, talking about bad and goods. Sometimes storms come in your life to clear your path.
Look, man. Wow.
And so you need to keep that in mind too. And that's, we have up on our courthouse up there, we tell them what's going on on the monitor up there. But we all try to put something like that up there. And that's what's been running here lately. We had up there was the, sometimes storms in your life come to clear your path.
That's good.
So embrace them.
Good, good, good. Anything you can tell us about any more road construction?
Yeah, we, uh, uh, the, uh, the voters voted again, T-Splash, uh, came through. And this is the year that this has started collecting that monies, uh, which brings a lot of construction, not only to the county, but the cities as well. Uh, and so those projects here, probably latter part, maybe of this year, certainly first part of next year start getting kicked off. Uh, I know one of those, we have several of those projects they voted on. I think, uh, one of them is, uh, the Cedar Crossing Road, uh, that goes into Montgomery County.
Right.
Uh, as opposed to the Vidalia Cedar Crossing Road, it's where they call that curve going back in there is going to be resurfaced first. Uh, Normantown Road, the old Normantown Road out here is also on schedule for that too. That's widening it and, uh, resurfacing it. Now that may be several years out, obviously, before that actually happens. But that's on that list too. And of course, the city just resurfaced their part of it. So it's going to connect that real nice. And then the bypass is, uh, supposed to be, part of it's supposed to be let this year, this fiscal year, twenty twenty-three. So, uh, that's moving along well too. And you'll probably hear, again, uh, it's going to change, that's going to be, you know, starting probably a few years out before you actually start seeing dirt moved around. But when it starts, it's going to start fast. And, uh, so that face of our community right now, right near here, uh, is going to change dramatically when that all starts popping. So those things are happening as well. And, you know, and again, some things we're finishing up with. We just did a five million dollar expansion at the landfill for solid waste. Uh, they are to take care of us for the next several years there. And, uh, so, yeah, we got a, got a lot of.
Oh, man, I'm, I'm, I'm getting tired, I'm getting tired just listening to you. Don't know if I'd want to walk a day in your shoes.
Uh, it's a great day.
Listen, man, this is, uh, this is good stuff. I, I, I mean, I really appreciate it. Um, you know, you talked about those storms, um, you know, sometimes they clear your path. And the voice of the dogs, Mr. Eddie Toohey sent me a text and said, man, that'll preach right there. And I was thinking the same thing. I said, wait a minute, our county manager has a little bit of preacher in it.
I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm just a sinner. That's all I am.
Look, man.
I'm just a sinner that saved.
Look, man.
And I'm nothing more and nothing less.
Wow, wow, wow. Well, listen, um, thank you for all you do.
Thank you, thank you for having me. Appreciate it.
I appreciate you, uh, taking time out to come and really allow our listeners to, uh, hear what's going on. You know, sometimes our, uh, officials and, um, our leaders can be busy, too busy to really meet and talk to the people. But I have to say that our community is not like that. Um, when I make the phone calls to our leaders, they come and they sit and they chair where you're sitting. And so I appreciate you being here. Um, it was God's timing to have you here at this time. And, uh, contrary to what you, uh, might have said about waiting and, and reaching to the bottom of the barrel to grab you. That is not the case. Uh, it, it was, it's right on time. So, um.
Always is.
Yeah, it is. So we're thankful and, um, I want to thank you. Uh, are you amenable or accessible to people reaching out to you? And if so, um, how, how would they, how would they contact you?
Uh, oh, yes, we're trying to be as just accessible as we possibly can. Uh, they can do it via phone, which is nine one two five two six three three one one, which is the, uh, county commissioner's office at the courthouse. Uh, they can come and visit anytime they wish. Uh, or call or make an appointment. And, uh, certainly we'll meet them and all that. Of course, sometimes I'm in, sometimes I'm out.
That's right.
Specifically just to see me.
That's right.
But anytime anyone has any questions or concerns, uh, please let us know. We can only make it better when we know there's an issue for us to be working on. And they, you out there listening audience, they see things that we don't necessarily see or know about because we can't be everywhere. Uh, and also, uh, like I say, and what we can fix and take care of, we will. What we can't, we can't. We'll tell you why we can't. Uh, sometimes it's too much money. Uh, we just don't have that much money to do. And sometimes it's legally we can't, uh, do some of the things that folks ask us to do. But still, this is your government and, uh, and that's part of the participation that you need to have in it, uh, as well.
Good, good. Well, thank you again, uh, Mr. County Manager. Ladies and gentlemen, this has been the man, the myth, the legend himself. And, um.
He's a mayor.
And so, um, we're just grateful. Come back again on next week and, um, we're promised to have another, uh, great, uh, a great show for you. And, uh, Mr. Manager, you be safe.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you again for everything. I know, uh, you're on your way out of town today, representing us at our, uh, state's capital. So, um, you and all of our commissioners, you guys be safe on the road, traveling grace and mercies. And, and I'll have to get you back again.
Be glad to. Just let me know.
All right. Well, ladies and gentlemen, this has been Community Matters. Again, I'm your host, the Doc. And, um, again, we always thank Mr. Dave Allen for his assistance and his help. Thank you, Ms. Dorothy Davis, uh, for all you do. And, um, keeping our archives, uh, uh, live and well on our website. For those of you who want to, uh, take a, a look at the handsome face of this Devon Air gentleman, you can go to TCBBroadcasting.com, TCBBroadcasting.com. And, uh, you can go to the Community Matters Archives and you'll be able to see our show there. Um, everybody be blessed and let us love on one another and tell somebody, uh, that they're, pat somebody on the back. And smile, why don't you? And, um, we'll see you again on next week here on Community Matters. Everyone be blessed and have a good day.
You've been listening to Community Matters with host Tony Doc Wardlaw. Sponsored by Todd Paget Housing Center in Claxton and by Vidalia Federal in Lyons and Vidalia. Tune in again next week to see what is happening in our community on Community Matters, a service of TCB Broadcasting.